Good evening and welcome to the May 25, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown and I'm the Commissioner from the Riverbend Township and I serve as the Chairman of the Board. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens, for our television audience and live streaming audience. I would like to present our Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township.
Good evening, I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Cloninger, Dallas Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Tom Kigger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you all. If you will now rise and for the invocation to be given by Commissioner Hovis and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Fraley.
If you will, please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come to you tonight recognizing all the blessings of life, all that you continue to bestow upon us, all the challenges that are before us as a board of elected board for the citizens of Gaston County. Father, grant us your wisdom, grant us your fate, as we continue to try to lead our county and continue to do all the great works that you wish us to do. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will call on Commissioner Worley to read a proclamation for Memorial Day. I believe we have some folks to receive it, Mr. Ms. Civil Byers and Mr. Greg Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, a Memorial Day proclamation. And just to remind folks, and I know a lot of folks like to thank all veterans and it's never inappropriate to thank a veteran, but Memorial Day is to recognize and honor those who gave all during the military service to the United States of America and to express our gratitude to the fallen members of the armed services. Whereas Memorial Day was first observed as Decoration Day on May 30, 1868, has an occasion for many Americans to decorate the graves of the fallen Civil War soldiers. Whereas after World War I, this day was expanded to include fallen members of all our nation's war, and after World War II, this day officially became known as Memorial Day. In 1971, Congress established Memorial Day, has a federal holiday to be observed on the last Monday of May each year. Whereas we recognize the sacrifices and contributions the men and women of our armed forces have made, upholding the principles of democracy and freedom. We extend gratitude to the families of our service members and recognize their sacrifices and unwavering devotion. Without their support, our men and women could not have completed their missions successfully. Whereas this Memorial Day, we express our deepest appreciation to the men and women who laid down their lives in service to our nation, and we mourn with the families and friends of those lost. It is our duty to preserve the legacy of those brave Americans who died defending our great country and our inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas during this time of reflection, we honor and commend those from Gaston County who have contributed to this great country. Our county has a long and decorated history of military service, and our citizens have made significant contributions locally and worldwide. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners salutes our service members for their outstanding devotion to duty, honor, and country, and we recognize Memorial Day, Monday, May 29, 2023, has a day to honor and remember our fallen heroes. The Commission further encourages the citizens of Gaston County to unite in prayer and reflection for the many sacrifices and accomplishments of our fallen soldiers, their families and our veterans. And this will be adopted the 25th day of May, 2023. Now I'd invite Greg or Savilla, if you'd like to come and accept this and say a few words on behalf of our veterans.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Savilla Byers with Gaston County Veteran Services. Chairman Brown, Member of the Board, I'd like to recognize Michael Meeks. Thank you very much for reading and approving the proclamation this evening. For families of military members in particular, Memorial Day is a solemn holiday, paying tribute to many men and women who have given their lives in this service for our great nation. So we want to use this opportunity right now to invite the Board and the community to Memorial Day on Monday, May 29, at the Gaston Memorial Cemetery. We will have a representation from across the county, our military branches at this event, and we encourage each and every one of you that can attend, please attend. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is presentation. Presentation be given on farmland reservation. Mr. Taylor Loftus, Chair of Quality of Natural Resources Committee, will now give a brief overview of the presentation for farmland preservation.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. I appreciate you guys having us out here tonight. As you said, my name is Taylor Loftus. I'm the Chair of the QNRC, and we serve as appointed members by you. So we're just here to speak a little bit about the Farmland Protection Plan. And before I get into that, I guess there's probably some people up here that may not know who QNRC is or what we do. So I'll do a little bit of a run through of that real quick here. We were established in 1988 by the Board of Commissioners to identify environmental issues and recommend policies to the BOC. There's seven members of our committee currently here in the county. There were different numbers at different times, but currently we have seven. Here's a list of them. All of us are Gaston County residents, various backgrounds. I'm an engineer. We've got another engineer on the team, Johnny Denton, who some of you may know, educators, doctors, a farmer, and some retired Ag Natural Resource Committee. Kyle is here tonight. I think he's probably the only one other than me here for QNRC. But Kyle is our resident farmer, so I thought it would be appropriate. If you have any farming questions, you'll have to direct them to Kyle because I don't know the answers to them probably. So why are we here to talk about farmland protection? Basically, as you all know, Gaston County is growing quickly, and most of the new things you see in Gaston County are large tract homes and developments. And the easiest place to put one of those is on field. It's often the cheapest place, too. And so what we want to do is ask ourselves, do we want to change our farmland protection plan and improve what it does for the farmers of Gaston County? That's basically the bottom line. And then when we improve for the farmers, we also improve for the rest of us that live here. So here are some benefits of protecting Gaston County farmland, and I won't read them all. I think probably one of the most important ones here is local jobs. When you're growing food here and selling food here, all that money that's generated in that sort of miniature piece of your economy stays right here. And it also provides good, healthy food for people who live here. I grew up on a rural Iredale County, not too far from here, and we had a garden my whole life. And now we still grow food in our backyard. And I'd like to keep that going for as long as we can. So that's one thing, creating community, lowering costs of services. Agritourism is a big deal. I'm sure tons of people have been out to pumpkin patches. We love to take our kids strawberry picking this time of year. But you've got to have farms to be able to do that, and you'd rather not have to drive an hour to somewhere else to do it. And so the farmland protection plan, I think, is a good way to sort of position this county to keep that going. So. Now, why now? Well, basically, we're losing a lot of farmland. This was from 2012 to 2017. So it's, I think this data gets updated again next year for the county of 2022 data. But 10% down from 2012 to 2017. So, and that was not as fast a growth rate as we've got now, I would argue. So a little bit about the actual reasons and what triggered this was our new strategic plan that came out. One of the things that came out of that plan was, well, what do we want to do for the farmers of this county? And one of the, I think David was involved in some of that development, and the suggestion was, well, we have this farmland protection plan, but it was written in 2009 and hasn't been updated. I think maybe there was a couple of y'all that were here at the time when it was approved originally. And so it might be a good idea to update that because that might be our best tool for protecting farmland and providing some assistance to the farmers in this county. And so that's why we're doing it now. A little bit about what's the purpose of the 2009 farmland protection plan, for those of you who may not know anything about it. Basically, it was approved by the Commissioners, and so the updates that, if we propose updates to you all, would have to be proposed to you guys. So that's why we're kind of here to talk to you about it tonight. We don't want to surprise you with a document to sort of review and update, and we'd invite you to get involved in the process if you so desire as well. But the origins of this were USDA program. Essentially, if you want access to some of these cost-sharing dollars from the USDA, you have to have a farmland protection plan. And so our plan at the time in 2009, the main goal was, well, how do we get past that gatekeeping and into this USDA cost sharing? And we have to have a farmland protection plan to do that. And so in order to gain access to these funds, and there's three things listed here as to what those funds go to, but in order to gain access to that, we had to develop a plan that met certain requirements, and that's sort of where we stopped with it, from my understanding. I wasn't around for that. But basically, we were trying to hit a mark to gain access to this. And now what we want to do is take that and update it, to do some different things. Now, the basic ideas, and this is where I was going to get to, was the frameworks there to assist the agriculture community and local governments working to support enhanced agriculture, right? Like that's a lot of words. Basically, it means it's a way to get government funds in the hands of farmers, so they can afford to farm, essentially, right? And what our plan does is it ticks off all the boxes of what we have to do, but it doesn't really get to like, well, how do we keep farming active in Gaston County, right? How do we protect the farmland here, not just generally, and gain access to these funds? So it's got some goals, and they've been addressed, but there's not a systematic measure of way, and there's not measurable outcomes that we can look at and say, well, is this plan actively doing anything for the farmers other than getting access to this program? So we do know what it has done, as far as some of the things that we've done through this program are the homegrown Gaston program, which is basically it markets local farms through the Homegrown Gaston event. There's a agriculture district, voluntary ag district, which gives farmers some. Now, if y'all want to ask specific questions about it, you'll have to ask David because I may misspeak here. But I think that basically the idea is that it provides some protection to the farmers who are in to the farmers who are in that ag district. And they can't, it just gives them a little bit of more freedom to farm without a fear of irritation from the neighbors, basically. The Farm School was there to set up new farmers or young farmers to get into the farming business, or to maybe support people or encourage people to get into the farming business. So that's the Farm School, that's part of it. And then we also got involved in the Visiting C Farms, which is the agritourism app that sort of will guide people maybe from Mecklenburg or Lincoln or Cabarrus County down to some of our agritourism areas and bring some of those dollars here as well. So those are some of the things that have been done as part of this plan, but there's a bunch of issues that face the farmers here that are not addressed at all in this plan. And this slide lists them out. We've got rising input costs, fertilizer costs this year, I know, is through the roof. I've heard that from a ton of people. You see it, I guess, too, in your yards, if you're fertilizing your own grass, you'll see that fertilizer costs are way up. Opportunity to develop, there's not a lot of access to new areas to farm if you want to expand a farm. Scarcely labor, that's pretty true in every industry, but farming is not nearly the least of those, I would imagine. We've got an aging group of farmers generally across the country, not just here in Gaston County. And how do we replace those farmers with a new generation of farmers? Limited markets to sell, you know, you've got farmers' markets here and there, but you may not have as much access to as much place to move your goods specifically as you might want. And then just general lack of community awareness. And what that gets at is when somebody may move in and they're planning on going to work in Charlotte, and they're living Gaston County, and they've never lived next to a farm, they may not understand what that means. And so some of that, just educating our community on why farms exist, why it's important to have them in your community, and what they bring to your community that you won't get from something else being there. We got this list from farmers in Gaston County. We went to talk to the Cattlemen's Association and got their input, and they said, well, these are our problems, but how do we find solutions to those problems, and where are we going to find them? And the first place that we thought to look were other counties in North Carolina that have the same problems as us. So we've got four right here, Guilford Counties, Davie County, Forsyth, and Buncombe. All these counties are similar to us in a way that they're near a metropolitan area of some kind. It's not Charlotte, but Winston-Salem, High Point, Asheville. They're going to have the same growth problems that we would have with uptake in farmers' land. And so all these plans have been updated since ours were updated. That's the first place we plan to look, and we're going to engage those folks and see what they're doing to protect their farmland and their sort of agriculture industries. And that starts sort of right now with this talk, and then in the coming months up here, we've got some, we've formed a series committee in June, which we're going to make up of essentially farmers, support industries for farms, but we'll have a QNRC representative and a soil and water representative. And we'll also, of course, have the Extension Service involved in that, too. And we'll plan to go through, do some community meetings, talk to the farmers in the county, and figure out what we can do to help them. We'll try to bring some ideas to the table so that we can present to them, hey, this is what some other folks are doing, you think this is a work here, right? And if it will, then great, and if it not, then we'll go back to the drawing board. And then basically, we'll wrap all that up in some revisions in the fall this year, and then come back and present that update to you guys sometime around the first of the year in 2024, so that we can present those updates to you guys and then incorporate that into the county plan as needed. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, Kyle and David are right here, and they'll be happy to answer them.
Don't go too far. Can you put that first screen back up you had with the, all the way back to the very first one where I had everybody's, your board? Any questions from the board that comes up this time? Ms. Cloninger.
How many acres are actually designated as farmland in Gaston County?
I don't know the answer to that.
David, you ain't got but a month left. Let's make sure you get up here and work hard.
There's no official farmland designation. Well, there's different variation, ways of measuring that. You can look at present use, how much land is in, present use taxation, that would be one measure. Then you've got the USDA numbers, so they give different farms, whether they meet the present use criteria or not, they're going to give them a farm number, and they would count a larger number of acres. So according to USDA, it's around maybe 35,000. You saw that was 37.
Okay.
Present use numbers, I don't know off the top of my head, but it'd be a lower number.
Okay. I just wondered. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I have a couple. David, hop back up there, just so you know. Kyle will be involved as well. This weekend, I went to the mountains. Top two problems they have, farmland. That was the number one. The other one was something totally different we were talking about, but they talk about sustainability of being able to do our own stuff. I would like to see, and if you guys don't know David Fogarty, David, thank you for your hard work and the time you've been, David retiring at the end of June, and you've been a great tremendous help for us. And we'll talk about that here in a second, but I want to find a way, before you leave, to get with the school system, now that we're going through some transition, and try to find a way to bring Kyle and what he does, tailor in that group to try to figure out how we can bring that to our children. Because how many of our children now don't know about sustainability of farmlands and things going? I want to work on that. I want to make that a project for us, but I want to find ways to help this especially because our farmers are going to be the biggest resource we have. We just brought a company in, G and T, and their biggest resource that they need is farmland. And we can't bring them here if we don't have anything to help them sustain themselves. So Kyle, thank you guys for what you do. I'm going to need some tomatoes to figure out who grows the best, maybe some meat we'll figure out, but I want to tell you guys, thank you for what you do. It's a thankless job because a lot of it, people don't understand what it's about, and they think they see it on TV, and it's just all Betroses, but it's not. And so I want to say thank you. But David, from our board, thank you. You've been a tremendous asset to this county and what you've done. We're going to miss you. Hopefully, we get somebody better than you. That's going to be very hard. And I don't say that, I don't say that to take it lightly, I said, because you've done a heck of a job, and we're very appreciative of the job you did, and we just wanted to say thank you. And so the end of June, you'll be on your way. If you guys don't know, David has been, how long have you been out there, David?
How many years?
Yes.
I've been director since 2003, so.
So a long time, 20 years you've been out there director. You were there before, so thank you for your time. Kyle, tell them thank you guys for what you do. Even though we put you on that board, it's not just a thankless job for what we think we see, but I'd like to find a way, if Dr. Eagle, if you don't mind, trying to get with David on how we can get with the school system and try to figure out ways we can do something quarterly, whether it be through the farming, the Cattlemen's side, with the Farm Bureau, whatever we need to do to figure out those pieces of the puzzle, because our children need to know how to take care and sustain, not just some of the things we're doing. So thank you.
Good bet.
Our next item is approval of the business agenda. Are there any revisions to the business agenda or any items that need to be pulled?
Motion to approve is revoked.
Second.
I would like to pull on item Z.
Okay.
For further discussion.
Ms. Cloninger would like to pull item Z for further discussion. Any other items need to be pulled at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the business agenda with item Z pulled for further discussion?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Frey, seconded by Commissioner Keger. All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. You provided draft minutes tonight's meeting, or for other meetings for the last meeting, regular meeting on 3/28. Are there any revisions? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Our next item is citizens' recognition. A portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. The comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer any questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Citizens' recognition tonight will be limited to three minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium and speak your, state your name and address for the record. The first citizen to speak is Mr. Timothy Roberts. The second person will be Marty McCarthy.
My name is Timothy Roberts, and my address is 8246 Catawba Cove Drive. I'm a lifelong Gaston County resident, and our family owns a home at 8246 Catawba Cove Drive and several wooded residential lots on Catawba Cove Drive. As a family, neighborhood, and community, we're extremely concerned about the upcoming rezoning of a parcel from residential to commercial, potentially making it easier for additional commercial rezoning in the residential neighborhood there. The 2035 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, I'm sure y'all are very familiar with that, just completed seven short years ago, calls for this area to remain rural, and on page 51 describes this as this land is highlighted as rural to ensure the development stays concentrated in the municipalities that serve sewer and water. And it helps to clarify it on page 28, as it describes what rural looks like. These areas are characterized by green, rolling hills, plenty of open spaces, along with farmstead-style housing, as well as agribusiness, which you just heard about. Residential homes are located on large lots and set back from the road they front upon. And I think it further emphasizes this on, you know, on the smaller map of this area is green. Like, I think that's intentional, that it was made green, insinuating that it probably ought to remain green. I hope as this rezoning proposal comes to you for deliberation, you'll review the good work done by many citizens, as well as Commissioners Keger, Fraley, and Brown, who were a part of this 2035 plan, to deny this rezoning request to commercial in this residential and rural area. Thank you.
The next person to speak will be Mr. Marty McCarthy, followed by D. Mark Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate your attention. I live at 8482 Catawba Cove, and the possibility of seeing commercial development on the street is very worrisome to us. When the developer that's proposing this zoning change to commercial gathered residents in the neighborhood to speak at the proposed site, he indicated during the time he has owned the property, the police have had to visit many times, indicating his negligence as an owner. He's indicating that by going to a commercial facility like this that will be unmanned but storing boats and RVs, that it will be a safer use of the property. So I called leaders in Marsh, as well as Palmer &amp; Kay, as well as Erie Insurance Companies to say, is that accurate? And they said, no, an unmanned storage facility attracts crime. The location that he is proposing to transfer from residential to commercial is a location that's about 300 yards from the state line. Smart criminals know how to defeat unmanned facilities' security systems, hit and run, and be across the state line very quickly before police have a chance to respond. If you were to change this to commercial zoning, it would invite more commercial zoning and destroy the character of a residential neighborhood. I hope you will not allow that change in zoning. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Mr. D. Mark Perkins, followed by Mr. Eddie Atkinson.
Good evening. My name is Mark Perkins. I also live on Catawba Cove Drive, 8458. Catawba Cove Drive starts at the South Carolina State Line, right on Polbrans Road, and it runs about three miles up to Rufus Ratchford Road. It winds along the waterfront of Catawba Cove, very peaceful, quiet residential road. And to put this storage facility zoned commercial in a residential area would be extremely intrusive. And we want to bring it to your attention. You'll be getting the request in coming weeks to change that zoning, and we really hope that you will consider not allowing what we think, for now, is the only commercial property in this residential area, and we hope it's not just the first of many, because that's just not the nature of where we chose to live. Appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. After Mr. Atkinson will be Ms. Melinda Roberts.
Hey, my name is Eddie Atkins, and I too live on Catawba Cove Drive. The developer talked to us the other day.
Physical address, please.
8254.
Thank you.
The developer talked about things that, you know, were going to be good for our community. One of them was the lack of storage facilities in our geographical area. Well, we've all looked into that, and that's not true. There's probably five storage facilities within 10 miles of that location, and those are just in North Carolina. South Carolina, if you've been on 49, Busterboard Bridge area, they're all down there, too. The road, like you said, was real windy road, and they're planning on bringing RVs and trailers on our road. And if you, I don't know if y'all are familiar with it or not, but it goes to Rufford Ratchford on one end and South New Hope on the other. Well, it's not South New Hope, it's South Carolina, South New Hope. Anyway, it's a curvy road, and they're planning on putting, you know, boats and RVs on that road, and it's just not made for it. It's, if you've been down that way, it's developed real over the last 10 years, the marina there, there's lots of boats there, and it's just a real congested area. And we don't think that adding to this would help our community at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Roberts.
Hi, my name is Melinda Roberts, and I live on 4973 Willow Pond Road. I don't live on Catawba Cove, but my land backs up to lots that have been sold recently over on Catawba Cove. We don't want to see commercial real estate anywhere around us. I mean, Lake Wiley is already crazy enough, so please, when you're considering this, vote no, and I'm sure you'll see all of us again. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with item Z pulled? Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Mr. Fraley. Any discussion? Did I read that before I do that? No. Any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I want to point out a few important Gaston County proclamations for the month of May that were adopted under tonight's consent agenda. That signed proclamation will be forwarded to each department. May 21st through 27th as Emergency Medical Services Week, month of May 2023 for Foster Care Awareness Month, month of May 2023 for Older Americans Month, and Tom accepted that one. Thank you, Tom. Items pulled from the consent agenda was item Z, is in Zebra, and that is taken. Do I have a motion to, let's just go ahead and, we had to have a motion to be able to discuss, right? Ms. Cloninger, you go ahead, and you can ask your questions, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Was it Dan or? Go right ahead, ma'am.
The question that I wanted to ask is that, is this land, was it seven and a half acres of land?
Correct, 7.53 acres.
And so would this be enough property there to be able to serve the departments in hand?
Yes.
And does that include, because I know that when I've been out to visit gyms, they have a lot of property and that type thing, will also include that as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me just read this just for the record. Public Works says this is to authorize a purchase of property located on Broad Street, Gastonia, parcel IDs 104360, 104361, 104362, and authorize- three six two, and authorize the fund balance transfers of the total purchase to estimated cost. Now, go ahead, sorry. I want to make sure we knew all what was going on about what we were actually talking about.
I know, is it, um, I understand that the Gastonia City Police also has like a nine-one-one system, is that correct?
I believe they have the backup system for our system.
They have a backup system? So when, when, if the, if this is approved, so does that mean, how will the backup system be taken care of, of, of that location there if, for some reason, that both towers would go down? How would that be handled?
I believe, I thought the backup system for the city of Gastonia was at the city PD location.
Yes, yes.
This is located
Right, right, right there.
Some distance away, but we were also planning on leaving, uh, the existing Communications nine-one-one center as also a backup.
And that would be at, on Highland?
On Highland.
On the Highland Street.
Yes, ma'am, on Highland.
So it would not be moved to this location here on Broad Street?
No, we, we are planning on moving that to Broad Street, but the existing location on Highland would be left as a backup in case anything happened to the new location on Broad Street.
All right. And I have one more other question. Is, is this centrally located in the county to where this land on Broad Street is available? Is that centrally located so that it serves all municipalities?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, it, it's a good location for the services that we're anticipating putting there, especially given the way we stage vehicles across the county, to your point, to serve the, the areas at further reach.
Okay, all right. And then, so what will be in the existing building? It will be the, still the communication, the backup system, and then what else will be in that building?
We would leave the existing nine-one-one communication system as a backup. It has not been determined yet what will go, what will backfill the existing Highland space.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Those items were pulled for discussion. Now we'll take the motion. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? All, all opposed? It's five one, Madam Clerk. No items were added by the majority appointments. Commissioner Fraley?
I have two, Mr. Chairman. I've got Scott Hunter with the new appointment for SARA local planning, the interim director of emergency management and fire marshal. Also got a reappointment for workforce development board, Ms. Donna Caskey.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keager, all in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application received for the Gaston County Fire Commission vacancy created by the Barry Wilson resignation. I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Todd Davis
Second.
To that seat.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis, all in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? Mr. Conner?
Okay, so I have an application from Scott Marshall for the vacancy of SARA Local Planning Committee.
I'll make that motion, uh, I'll second the motion. No, you're fine. Any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? Mr. Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two tonight. I'll make those both at the same time. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to reappoint Ms. DeeDee Gillis, the Crowder's Mountain Representative on the Parks and Rec, and for Travel and Tourism Advisory, Mr. Monte Montalon. Those two reappointments are requested.
Seconded by Commissioner Fraley, all in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? Mr. Keger?
To the Board of Adjustments, representing an unincorporated area, Mr. Sean Ray, it's W.R.A.Y., uh, reappointment of Claudette Argabright to the Workforce Development Board and Crystal McCabe, also reappointment.
I'll second that. All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? I, I have one for the Health and Human Services Board, application received by Ms. Sean Zill, seconded by Commissioner Hovis, all in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? I have one full board. This is for the Gaston County Fire Commission. I received four, Robert Westbrook, George Hooker, Scott Xander and Dusty Haney.
Motion, motion to, um, for Robert Westbrook.
Second.
Motion made for, was Robert Westbrook?
Correct.
And the second one, it comes from you, was that one? Okay, Commissioner Keger?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Keger, second that, all in favor? I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? The next one is for the Gaston County Fire Commissioner, Interim Director of Emergency Management and Fire Marshal, Mr. Scott Hunter. Seconded by Commissioner Hovis, all in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? Next item is reports. Commissioner Fraley?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Worley?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, I was able to attend County Advocacy Day Tuesday and Wednesday. The reason our meeting was postponed till today with, along with Commissioner Keager and Commissioner Hovis in Raleigh, we were able to meet with the delegation to include Senator Overcash and Representative Loftus and Representative Torbit, and felt like we had a productive meetings with them, was able to spend time with them and talk about the needs of Gaston County and they were certainly, we share constituents with all of them and they certainly understood what we were, we're talking about and were, are willing to help us at any time. And so I just wanted to share that, that with you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Conner?
Yes, I went four different locations. On May the tenth, I attended the Gaston County Law Enforcement Memorial Service at the Point Church in Belmont, uh, which was followed by the replay and ceremony at Gaston Memorial Park. I know that many of us attend that throughout the year. On May seventeenth, I went to Antioch Lutheran Church where Murf Conner and the church honored our first responders by providing a meal, and then over three hundred box lunches were delivered to Charville and given to public safety while on duty and to the citizens who needed a hot meal. I also went to Charville along with Commissioner Fraley and we were involved there with a press release and then I was able to go out with Chief Hunt Sanger, as well as, um, from the Charville Police Department and Chief Ellis to tour the damage there. It was really remarkable to be a part of that and it's terrible that they experienced this, so much destruction in, um, in Charville, but it was wonderful to be able to see the partnerships and relationships of our county departments working together. And I wanted to thank, you know, GMS, as well as the county police and other departments that were there, um, on hand, firsthand, um, providing assistance. And then on May twenty-fourth, I attended the open ceremony of the Gaston County Veterans Treatment Court at the Gaston County Courthouse and our Honorable Gus Anthony has been assigned to be the presiding judge in this courtroom by our Chief District Court Judge, John Greenley. And then a special thanks is for all of those that have made this possible for the veterans in the community. And now Gaston County is the seventh county to offer this specialized courtroom. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hovis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am the board's representative on the Caramont Board of Directors and wanted to let you know that we had a very productive advanced planning event early in May, continuing to work on the needs of Caramont Health Outreach and the things that they do for citizens in Gaston County. In the middle of May, Caramont also hosted an open house for the South Tower. That's the Urgent Care Tower and that was very warmly, uh, rece, uh, received by the public in terms of reception. Many, many people there, more than I thought would be there. If you haven't had the opportunity, and I hope you don't have the opportunity to have to go there now because they're not doing tours, but if you're in one of those new suites, you're going to be totally amazed. It's nothing like you've ever seen. I've had the opportunity recently myself, within the last year, to be in Chapel Hill for a little bit of surgery. I saw nothing like what I saw in the South Tower at Caramont. Latest technology, great rooms, wonderful organization, and they're certainly set to meet the needs that we weren't able to provide people during COVID, when we had all of our emergency services basically shut down and isolated families from their, their loved ones who were in there for care in a very dark time. But this facility fully allows us to do the things that we need to do and to, uh, provide that service for both the family and the patients. And then Caramont's very, very proud of that. Uh, and like Commissioner Worley said, Mr. Commissioner Keager and Mr. Commissioner Worley and myself did get to attend in Raleigh and our local delegation and other commissioners across the state were amazed that Gaston County has already committed, completed a budget, passed a budget, revenue neutral per the North Carolina Department of Revenue's formulary guidelines to try to treat the citizens and the taxpayers of Gaston County as equitably as possible. We are probably the first county in the state to have accomplished that budget process and done it so eloquently. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Keager?
Uh, just briefly, I want to give an update on the athletics at Gaston College. I think everybody probably received a, an email about it, but both the women's softball team and the men's baseball team, in just their second year, both, uh, won their regional playoffs. The women will be playing in Oxford, Alabama. They started Wednesday, I think, or Tuesday, and they'll play through the weekend, hopefully be successful. The men's baseball team are heading to Grand Junction, Colorado, so that's some good news for Gaston County. And I will reiterate, last year, the first year of existence, the, the men's baseball team wound up fourth in the nation in junior college, junior and community college, with, I think, a thirty, thirty-four and four record. That's, that's amazing for Gaston College. It's, uh, one of the jewels of this county. Thank you.
And they couldn't participate last year because it was their first year.
They were still ranked, though.
Right, no, I'm just saying, I wanted to say that's why they couldn't go what they're doing this year. We wish them the best of luck. Lots going on in the county. I want to thank all of you for, uh, your participation throughout and different things that you've done. It's just, it's, it's a thankless sometimes, but we do a lot to go out and to, to meet with you. I want to thank you guys for going up and representing us, uh, at different spots. I know there's been a lot going on throughout, um, our community and we appreciate what you guys are doing.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Hovis is your liaison to the Fire Commission and tonight he has a presentation to share, um, from the Fire Commission, um, related to the recommendation moving forward. So I'll yield my time to Commissioner Hovis.
Thank you, Dr. Eagle. I think all the board has their hard copies and will, uh, advance the slide presentation. It should come up momentarily. And there it is. Let me just give you some highlights of where we are today. We're in our second year of the Unified Tax Code, or Tax Rate for Gaston County. We adopted all these changes last year to start this. And not only is Gaston County, but virtually every county in North Carolina and across the nation is finding many things that they're having to address in terms of their fire protection services. And this is just one of many steps that we'll be doing over the next several years, but I'd like to recap what, where we are today. There have been meetings with the volunteer fire departments and stakeholders to share information and understand the process and data analysis work that's been done to get us to this point and ask, and information asked to come back to us and things that they've had the opportunity to critique and bring that back. We passed a resolution for the Gaston County Fire Protection Service Rate Cap that would not to ever exceed fifteen cents per hundred valuation without the express approval of this group. The public hearing and approval was done for the Gaston County Fire Protection District. We approved a resolution dissolving the previous fire advisory board and created a new Gaston County Fire Commission. The Gaston County Board of Commissioners held public hearing requests from High Shoals, Lowell and Ranlo to join part of the Gaston County Fire Protection Service District. In other words, dissolving their municipal responsibilities and incorporating those within the, the county's jurisdiction and the fire tax districts. We appointed members to newly fire, created Fire, Gaston County Fire Commission. Several other new people have been appointed tonight through our normal appointment action. We have first, we had the first Fire Commission meeting and work on bylaws, update contract, response time and staffing was done. Our progress to date is prior to, the prior year's tax rate for twenty-twenty-three was eleven cent per hundred valuation. The goals of the twenty-three budget were, uh, were to provide baseline funding for each VFD, enhance supplemental funding for future service improvements, funded for grant matches and multi-part, department joint service delivery projects, and the initial funding for a capital improvement fund, which was non-existent prior to this organ, reorganization state. The next slide has, I've not advanced the slides, I've been too busy reading, I apologize. Let me get, the next slide, uh, has the breakdown of all the VFDs, their adopted funding for nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two in the past. That's the rate that it's been. You see it went from four point eight to five point two, to five point three, to six point two for the twenty-twenty-three adopted budget. We'll go on to the next slide. This is where we are, once we established the Unified Fire District and the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, uh, adopted budget included seven point three million dollars of funding across these agencies to create that. One of the things that we're looking at doing in twenty-twenty-four is to fill the void that was requested of nine point six million. The VFDs have been greatly impacted by the inflationary items of fuel and other consumables that have highly impacted each of their operations. We're looking, and the Fire Commission is proposing, a decrease in the fire tax from the eleven cent per hundred to nine point five cent per hundred. A revenue neutral rate would, as calculated by the Department of Revenue, would have been seven point five cents. And that's the inflationary reasons and other equipment upgrades and also the addition of labor, because we don't have the number of volunteers present in our current system as we once did. So we're going to have to find a way to supplement, to have a, an effective firefighting force to cover the residents and homes in Gaston County. So that's another reason for our looking at a nine point five cent, so we can provide some of these VFDs with some twenty-four-seven coverage for at least a minimal effective force. And that is a, uh, a, a term that can be debated under many different analyses, but the Fire Commission as a whole has determined what we think we could do for that. That salary increase reckon, rec, is recognized at about one point one million, providing twenty-four-seven staffing and would increase and create a standard pay of sixteen dollars an hour for those people under that category. The twenty-twenty-four budget requested summary breaks down to four point two million in personnel, two point seven million in operating costs, three point, two point three million for capital and half a million for supplementary equipment. This bar chart shows you the individual effects across each of the individual VFDs. The adopted rate is in the dark blue, the light blue is requested added on top of that chart to show what that, the, the amounts it, it increased and how it increased by individual, uh, volunteer fire departments. The labor cost is a breakdown here that we were talking about, the one point one, it's actually one point oh nine seven, if you want to get really down to the nitty-gritty, is what was done. This go, this shows the hours per week that were in the twenty-twenty-three budget and it shows what's being proposed under the twenty-twenty-four budget, increasing it just over twelve hundred hours, uh, to create that effective, minimal force that we need. Is this where we need to be? Absolutely not, but we can't get there all in one fell swoop. And the Fire Commission has dealt with this in detail. We've had very robust, open conversations. Our fire chiefs have been very involved. I know there's been conversation with, with our chairman who is here tonight. If you would, if everyone who's with the Fire Commission, y'all would please stand because we've got quite a few people here and I don't want to call everybody out by name, but we've got a good representative group that's here tonight and we appreciate your service to the county in this appointed role. Thank you very much. And, um, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's pretty much the, 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 the whole enchilada as it stands today. We still have a lot of it stands today. We still have a lot of other work to complete, getting us where we want to go and working on next year's request and understanding where that is. We will be asking all the VFDs to come up with a line item budget request, to where we have all of these costs incurred by everybody the same way, so that we can do our analysis appropriately and understand that we're giving everybody what they need and see who's being impacted worst in any of those directions. I'm available for any questions from the board, should you have any, and we have staff here that's available as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hovis. Are there any other questions that need to be asked of the Fire Commission? Commissioner Keger?
Yeah, this might be best answered by the manager. Okay, and I'm just trying to figure out why. We're talking about going from 11 to 9.5, but revenue neutral is 7.5. If the county, which has the same expenses and increases in vehicles, maintenance, utilities, the gas increase, if the county went and stayed revenue neutral, why can this not do that?
I'll defer a portion of that to Mr. Hovis, because he's been working with the Fire Commission on putting the budget together. My understanding is the most significant part of that is the staffing for the VFDs, and he can elaborate on that.
Okay.
The county manager's correct. The labor is the largest single line item increase, where we're adding over 1,200 hours of labor that was non-existent in the prior year into this year's budget, which is what you see on that chart right there that you're looking at. At the same time, the other inflationary components, our VFDs in the past have not really kept up with their line item cost to the level of specificity, and in this budget, they were very good to follow the advice and questions that we had asked before, and we got better information. Was it truly what we possibly need? Probably not, but at the same time, they're trying to operate much more like a business. In the past, they all had their own unique way of doing things, and we're trying to get everybody looking at the pot the same way, and we know it's going to take more money. Their original request was some $380,000 more than what the Fire Commission has agreed to with the 9.5 funding. We tried to keep them whole this year. We kept them pretty much whole last year with the increase that you saw from '23 over '22, and we were trying to stay close to that, but at the same time, we recognized that we needed to hold back just a little to make sure that we got everybody on the accounting side keeping up with costs incurred under the same formulary. And if I speak in error, any of you gentlemen out there want to throw a rock at me and strike me out, I'll let you do that, but that's pretty much the reason, Mr. Keger.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I guess, anybody else have any other questions? I have a few, maybe to the manager or yourself, Commissioner Hovis. I guess what I'd like to know is, A, I'd like to see a chart with, starting at least 7.5, and then every incremental from 7.5 to 8, to 8.5, to get to where we are at the 9.
A chart, I'm sorry, I'm in.
How we did the, we did for the budget, we started, I think it was at 59, 60, 61, 62, to see what those preliminary numbers would look like and what would happen, and then ask the fire departments where. Those would be mostly met with how the danger when we went from, let's just say, the 9, where we would start now, back to, you know, how we did, what happens as we go further backwards.
So for clarification, operationally, what the impact is, given those different levels?
I guess my only issue, I'd like to know how the staffing works. Is that for, on how that's going right now? Because we asked the same thing of our departments. We had the sheriff came and asked for a number of people, and we said no, because we were trying to worry about the things that happened inside that budget, and they had inflationary issues. So, I want to know more about where we are and how those are, and just trying to figure out some of those things. I look at some of the numbers, over the top are almost $200,000 roughly to what those numbers mean, and I'd like to see more about where we are on those numbers from the 7.5 to 8.5 to 9, and see what all, and find out what they're missing, how we did it with the board, how we said, hey, when we got to 59, we knew that there were cuts to come. What happens with that? So, I'd like to know more about that type of expenditure on those things. How many additional hours are going to be put in with this money, if that's what we're doing, and we're trying to find labor for 24 coverage now for each department, or what that's going to happen? I know it's a surrounded number, but I'd like to know more about what those expenditures are, and I'd like to know, I know when I was sitting on the board, they had different costs that they were putting in. Maybe just send the board out what those budget requirements or what they look like as a whole for the board to be able to review, just so we can see that. Not saying that anybody's doing anything, but I'd like to see those type of numbers, because if we went up only from the '22 to the '23 adopted budget, some people were 30, 40,000 over, now we're at 200,000 over. Where were most of those expenditures? And if it's labor, I'd like to know what those labors are for, where we stand now, and what's being added. Is it more people for 24/7 coverage in addition of what they already have? So, say somebody had 24/7 coverage, are they adding two more people to that? Is it going to be one person type of relation to see how many staff they have that are paid? If that's, madam, if you, manager, if you don't mind getting that in that form.
We'll be happy to coordinate that with the Fire Commission.
And we'll be voting on this on the 13th of June will be the adopted date, the 13th of that budget, so we'll be working on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it was the commission's desire to come to you with that level by VFD. The problem we had was, we didn't have that level of specificity in each of our budget requests to give you that information, and one of the things that we're continuing to work on, it hasn't ceased work, is to get that out to the VFDs, and then the chair of the Fire Commission, and I offered myself to meet with each of the chiefs to sit down one-on-one and go through their budget. We have sent them all a template of a line item budget that we feel like is probably 95% where we want it to be, I believe, and it's supposed to be going. If y'all haven't received it, it's supposed to be coming. So, that way we can turn around and ask those kind of questions, because I understand that the board wants that level of specificity. Somewhere in all of this, it does talk about the increase of salaries of 1.1 million, and is to provide additional 24/7 coverage to each VFD that has the capacity to provide that today. Some have said, we don't need that, but this budget allows that for everyone, and as we meet with individual VFDs, if they say they don't want that for the full year, but we can be ready in January or whatever, then we will adjust those numbers, and we will have that per volunteer fire department, if that helps you understand.
One other question, I guess this would be for you, Commissioner Hovis. With the new increase of cost of labor, can we get last year's, what each paid for, each paid per hour, to see what it's going to now per hour, if it's at that new impact number?
That's what we'd like to have, yes.
Okay, that's what I'd like to say.
And that's what we'd like to have as a basis, so that we can compare.
To see where we started from the last two years to where we are now, because I know, I know one time they were talking about some disparaging numbers.
And there's been disparity in payer, pay, because some were paying less, some were paying more, and we're trying to come up with a unified rate of pay, because we recognize as time goes on, we're competing with other people who are paying more, and we recognize that, and we've got, we've got to get to some kind of baseline, and this is just to establish a baseline. But yes, sir, you're correct.
And I want to tell all first responders, what happened last week in Charville, to all of you who were involved, to everybody who had to cover somebody else, also with the fire that happened in Charlotte, thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for how you get involved, and thank you for your services. Esquire Setzer?
New report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do any other matters need to come before the board at this time? Commissioner Fraley?
Yeah, I just want to add to your remarks and some of Commissioner Cloniger's earlier remarks, and personally thank all you guys, emergency management, GMS, county police, Sheriff's Department. Last Tuesday, that storm got pretty hairy, pretty scary for a little bit there. Whether it was a tornado, microburst, I still don't know, straight-line winds, it might have been all three. It was pretty bad, but the response was awesome by all you guys. We appreciate everything you did, and Gaston County is very, very fortunate to have professional, dedicated employees, emergency employees like we have. We appreciate you guys. Thank you for everything.
Anyone else need to speak?
I've left at your seat a copy of Public Works' capital report. We've been sending these out via email monthly, but we're going to transition to something that's a little more thorough and robust and do that quarterly. There's more to report on a quarterly basis in terms of progress on capital projects, so you've got the first edition there at your seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I wanted to, I want to relay something to our community about how our employees work outside of the community, and I'm very proud of the things that they do. We had one in 2026, they'll be invited to the World Cup for their goalie, and if you'll look in the middle, the goalie here for the next World Cup for the USA will be none other than Vincent Wong, and Vincent and his team won the championship, so thank you for representing us, Vincent, and we can't wait till the World Cup comes home with you. Thank you, pal. This concludes our meeting. This concludes our meeting for tonight. The board has rescheduled its June 27 regular meeting immediately following the June 13 regular scheduled meeting of the work session for here in the Harley B. Gaston Forum Public Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please direct your telephone to our clerk, Donna Buff, at 704-866-3196. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Warley. Good night, Vinnie DeGolli. All those in favor, say aye.